Mr. McCallum, what you're seeing is fresh from the drone today. After they came and approved it, is a very brief video of the completed roof for this building. You recall back in the spring, I told the board that we had close to 100 beeps in this building. And so this project has taken seven years and now it's pleased that it's completed. So, Mr. McCallum, can I hit play? This is not that long. It's just up today. The envelope moves it's 195,000 square feet and it's our largest building. Which building? And the solar panels go back on, unfortunately. They go on this here, because this is where the sun hits. They were originally here on the ground. Three cameras, two cameras are going to go back up there. Alright, thank you. I know we've talked quite a bit about the roof and it took substantial periods to complete, but I'm pleased that it is up and that's the results. So I appreciate the board and I appreciate more importantly having the funds from the taxpayers to put such a nice system in. So, it's warranty for over 30 years, so. Okay, other than that, we'll do a back question.
So we're going to do a roll of the minutes, 4.1? Okay, sorry, 4.2, regular minutes for October 15th, any motion? Any questions? Roll call please.
Mr. Edwin?
Yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynn? Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Yes.
Okay, public comments for agenda items only. State your full name and address, state your item.
Hi, Helen Grace Lenheim. I have a question on 7.7 D. It was the New Jersey Board. Did you get the percentage rate of Republican vote?
I don't know the percentage difference from what the Public Bank was, but I didn't know that the estimated interest earnings from New Jersey Board probably approached $20,000. Again, these are short-term investments. And they're short-term because we intend to do energy savings improvement projects, so it won't add a lot to those other rules that govern how long the Board of Education can invest money in period. There was a second question with regard to what would we do with that interest? As the workshop meeting indicated, I really didn't know what we're going to do with the money. But, Board of Education can do one or two things. They can either post the interest earnings into their general fund or they can post their interest earnings into the debt service fund. When you have earnings from proceeds more often than not, you are compelled to take the interest earnings and use it to offset debt service payments or in this case, you have to put the payment for the bonds in general fund or operating budget of the board. My recommendation to the board is that we would use the interest from these New Jersey Board investments to simply offset one of the debt service or one of the payments on the bonds that we raised for these projects. I know that wasn't your question, but.
Good. Any other public comment?
I have a question.
Is it for an agenda item?
Well, what did you just say?
Okay, fine. What was your name?
Denise Coy.
And your address?
1062 Tanger.
Okay, question.
You said you're going to use the interest to pay with steel on the bond, correct? Okay, what happens to the money that you were going to use to pay the bond if you didn't have the interest? Is that staying for something else?
Well, it may just mean that the appropriations that the board would have to put in their operating budget would be reduced by the amount of interest that you would earn. So if you were to raise $100,000 in the first bond payment, it's say $500,000. Instead of having to put full half million dollars in to make the first payment, you would only have to put $400,000 and move the $100,000 in interest in to satisfy the payment. So, in some ways, you know, earning the interest is really going to be tax related. Probably on the first payment, it's 20 years worth of payback, but it's only $100,000, but it certainly will help in the first payment.
These bonds are in general funds. They are not debt service funds.
They're not.
So it's the money that we pay is reserved out of debt service. This comes out of our operating budget.
Correct.
So the line for item was paid after 20 years?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other public comments for agenda item? We'll move on to background recording. For the superintendent?
Ladies and gentlemen of the board, I'd like to request an consent resolution for generating 6.2A through 6.6B.
Any questions?
Yes. Under 6.6F, which is substitute home instruction teacher, non-contracted employees, who have a joy and routine or mean non-collegial, does that come out of IDVA? This is under attachment 6.6F.
Is that a non-public nurse?
It's a non-public nurse for RDA.
Yeah, okay. Thank you, question. Yes.
Okay, because I understand that because our students attend there, that we pay for the nursing?
We don't pay. We don't pay. We are required by the state to kind of be the fiduciary agent on behalf of the state.
Okay.
We have lots of council kids that attend this school.
Yes.
There is non-public funds in different buckets. One of them is called non-public nurse. And so, in this case, this school has hired an employee, but the funds that pay this employee are of rest. The state doesn't send money to the non-public school, they send it to us.
Correct.
And then we dispatch the payment to them.
Oh, is that for the whole, that's the whole salary? That can be get from state to give to her, or is it portioned?
I don't really answer that.
Okay.
But it could be one of, it could be either. It could be either. If they only receive eight thousand dollars, they want to pay the double. They need to their own means to pay her. The money we receive on behalf of the same non-public second, we're owing them just the amount of money, specific money that the state tells us to take.
Okay. I just never saw it before as the name and the title or the place where she works.
Okay.
Thank you.
They used to hire her here. We used to have to hire them, they would work right there. Because it's so difficult to get that position filled and doing the desk.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a couple. 6.6H. Can we just change that date, please? Can we get rid of that?
We always look at that to actually do it.
Okay, and then, oh, is that? Is that working correctly? Is it working correctly?
Working correctly? Well, it's a recommendation to approve the success of contract with Principals and Supervisors Association.
That's, oh, I'm looking at O, not N?
Sorry. Well, we've, I hope Board of Education this in probably executive session. In years that we go through a series of collective bargaining and extended negotiations, there are delays in making recommendations, recommendations for all staff. So in some cases, we have waited for the Principals and Supervisors Association's contract to be.
Yes, okay. It said for the employment of, and that's what confused me.
Well, that is a good point. It could be for the renewal.
Okay.
Renewal of staff. I wouldn't have a problem saying that.
I was just confused. Thank you.
No, you're not confused.
You're going to have to fix it.
Do you want to change it to renewal?
No, I just find my way.
Okay, but I can't correct. But this is just one year renewal for certain staff. You're right.
Okay. That's it for me.
Okay, we have a roll call please, as amended. Mr. Edwin?
This is for 6.2, I said 6.6?
Yes. As amended.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mrs. Lynn?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Yes.
Mrs. Anderson?
Abstain from 6.6F, yes on the balance.
6.6S?
F.
For business management?
I may ask you for consent for why I don't. 7.1, 7.7.
Any clear questions?
Yes.
Two seconds.
Okay.
Any questions? Roll call please. Mr. Edwin?
Yes, I need to abstain on 7.7C.
Mr. Johnson?
Abstain on 7.7C and 7.7D. Check number 114412. And no on check number 114584.
What was the number? 1144?
114524. Yes, on the balance.
Mrs. Lynn?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
I'm doing no on check number 114406. Yes, on the balance.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Dowd?
Abstain on check number 114449, yes on the balance.
Mrs. Stone?
Yes.
What business is that?
Actually, the whole business was a little.
Different?
Different. I have none, but just want to do the question of the funding.
We'll move on to public comments for any item?
I just want to say that.
Say your name and I'll.
Oh, sorry, Janet Shaw, and I'm a little younger. I teach at this school. And actually, the kindergarten teachers experienced a really great, awesome in-service directed by Beth Gordon, and we concluded that it was the best in-service that we had attended. It was also a consensus, that was a great time for all the kindergarten teachers to meet together, and we decided we're going to let you know that we really appreciate the Super Kids program. It is really, really working. Really, we have the children very successful, they're making great connections, and we have the kindergarten teachers, we would like to thank you for going to help out and our board and to benefit each other.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Helen Grace Lenheim. If you don't mind, I'm going to read something to you. I had planned to come with a couple of questions and decided instead that I would write a statement. So this is an open statement that will be made its way to social media to all foster county residents and current members of the Board of Education. As we ponder the results of the most recent school board election, we congratulate the winning team. They're not here. However, we have to question several things. Many are not in your control, but some are. We have to wonder why so much time and energy and money is spent to further the election of three unknown people never attending the only meeting. We have to wonder why people actually have such disregard for others. We have to wonder why what is best for a child is never part of the equation for the thinking process. We have to wonder why chosen candidates are not yet vetted. Instead now, you open yourself to the current well-deserved controversy. You clearly have three candidates within propriety surrounding their names. You have proven fact that their campaign website, Building Brighter Futures, is registered to Venus Adult Superstore, which is a porn shop in Philadelphia. This shows a total lack of respect for this school district, encompassed by all staff, the students, the parents, and guardians. In our opinion, this shows a total lack of ethics on the three people who allowed their name to have been associated and surrounded their campaign with this. This is no way to reflect the integrity needed to represent children. The two of these words don't even belong in the same sentence. If this is your brighter future, we have to question, what is the brighter future for the children of Gloucester Township? Another controversy includes a video made by one team member and over-the-top usage of heavy equipment to support campaign banners on Election Day by the third team member. Then there are the questions surrounding the lies published in campaign literature pieces. One story was quickly discredited when we learned of the divorce in 2010, a family that never moved to Gloucester Township, children that never attended these public schools, real estate purchased after the divorce, however, the lip pieces brought them here as one happy family. Tax records solely in the candidate name. Most reliable sources indicate that this property is used for business only. The residence is in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania, with his girlfriend and or at their home in Mordelette. So to refresh memories from not so long ago, a former Board of Education member with time left on his term moved his family to a home outside of Gloucester Township. He still owned his property here in the township. However, due to the fact that he no longer slept in Gloucester Township, he submitted his resignation from the Board of Education. Several of the partner members up there voted in the affirmative to accept his resignation. In fact, several asked me, when is he going to resign? Since this situation evenly powered us the other, we asked the current Board of Education to seek the resignation of Mr. Brian Reagan. Since it was an established past practice, it needs to be followed again. There are no changes in the circumstances surrounding his situation versus Mr. Guy Williams, so there should be no change in the outcomes. And we respectfully ask this Board of Education to consider to do the applicable thing and follow the path of what's right for the children.
Thank you.
I also have a statement. I apologize for reading. First, I would thank all those that supported us in the school board election. I was saddened by the results. I would like to congratulate the team of one. There were several questions that I have to guard the school board. Did anyone consider the education of the children of Gloucester Township? They should be the number one reason there, not with the interest of the candidates. I have to ask, was there a vetting process going through candidates? Just to brush you up on the definition of vetting, it is to do a background check, examine, investigate on someone before you offer them a position. It's critically important to ensure that candidate's credentials stand up to scrutiny before moving forward. It helps to eliminate unsuitable candidates. You didn't do your homework for this election. There are so much controversy with these three candidates. How come why do these people not know that their name is tied to Venus Adult Superstore for their camp, Superstore for their campaign website, which in plain terms to me is porn shop? This is a disgrace. And this in the same sentence as school board, what is it without the children? I have to ask, is this the reason for Building Brighter Futures? Then we have a video from one member and another member who's contracted the township in another school picture. Then we have one member with so many questions that is biographical now. He never had children of this tier or attended school here. Does he really desire here or is it just a manager's word of business which people have told him, have told us? Just to refresh your memory, about another school board candidate that ran and did not pass his criminal history background. Do you all remember how that moved that year? Looks like the lesson was not learned. Maybe next election, next election, we can ensure morals and ethics will be part of the process to ensure quality education for our children of Gloucester Township. It's not that it gives a bad children in your future.
Meaning, Rick Haldeman for Mayor. First of all, I wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, you and your families. Hope you enjoy. The last time we met, you were kicking for 15 bus drivers. Any up on employing bus drivers reducing the number of needs for bus drivers?
We're still struggling with that, Mr. Paul.
Okay. Very, very pleased to see that the roof was done. I would like to know on the follow-up of the damages that were, had occurred during the roofing project and the time off of the gym floors and various other things that we had discussed earlier, have all of those been rectified?
Can you explain that in terms of like?
There was, did you talk about the last couple meetings?
Yes. Yes.
Or?
If there were any from the temporary patch that had flown away, those have all been rectified.
Okay.
Yes.
Has it?
That's your question.
Has the building since been thoroughly inspected by someone with great credentials for mold, mildew, and any other matter that may be dangerous to children? We had water incident, water brings all kinds of mildew and mold. I'm just curious as to whether the follow-up had had professional business with credentials or governmental agency checked for mold and mildew in the aftermath of the damage.
We had County County Department of Health in and on the school to review, I believe, certain sections of the building. Not the entire building, but it certainly was where there were leaks that were identified. And we did receive a report from County County Department of Health and they did not find anything that was unfavorable, although they did have a case of certain recommendations that were marked. I believe we are completing some insulation or already done that correctly?
Okay then.
Okay. It's not always a roof leak that causes a leak. Sometimes, as you may know, insulation around piping is so degraded, degraded that you need to put new insulation. Because the pipes sweat, when they sweat, and certainly human, whether they make moisture on the ceiling tiles and they happen in that dining suite and that's why the county came out to take a look.
And also, the last meeting that I attended, there was a concern about our schools that had wet ceiling tiles and those which were, and I don't believe I ever did get a definitive answer on whether these ceiling tiles were painted over and whether a, what is deemed a mildew resistant or anti-mildew paint had gone over some of these damaged ceiling tiles. Had any, my question at the time, was any official remediation done by a company or governmental agency of credentials?
Company, no, but I will tell you, it's not our practice when there's a wet ceiling tile to let it dry and then paint over it, like with some kind of a primer and a paint. Normally, when we have a wet ceiling tile, we pull them down and we want to investigate the cause of the leak, fix the leak, and then replace it with a new ceiling tile.
Okay.
I think the last meeting you were at, there was a woman from the aerial section.
Yes.
After that meeting, I went up to her because I wanted to know exactly in the building, where she saw these leaks. She told me where it was the next morning. Mr. Umar and I went out and we saw a condition that wasn't necessarily mold or, it just was unsightly, this particular small lavatory. So, the drop ceiling grid was made out of steel, which is Paris metal. Mr. Umar made the decision to tear it out, replace it with aluminum so it wouldn't rust in the future. And is that ceiling back in there? Need to check that for me. But I did, I did follow up. I didn't know where that different woman was pointing and then she, she had said there was some unsightly area and so we did follow up with that.
Okay. And all answers are satisfactory, I appreciate that.
And we also had the county out more than once and all the reports from the Department of Health have been made here. Did you ever say as the mayor's are for satisfaction? I thought the camera was all back there.
They were.
Thank you.
Very direct. My last, I guess I might be interrupting the question. As you all know, I've attended council governmental meetings and at our last council meeting, council had the first reading of an ordinance and had to do with property tax. And it was in certain states, only a couple of states that are not taking advantage, are able to take advantage of the federal tax relief for working people and businesses. Because we're a sort of taxed state, we seem to be the first township that is looking into an ordinance that will allow residents, in order to fall into the numbers that would be able to take advantage of that federal tax cut, to get something of an offset in making a charitable contribution to the township under public safety, whether it be police, recreation, public works. It therefore could offset the number that is used in the tax cut. Now, our council president has quickly pointed out that the property tax is made up of only a small section of the municipal tax, with a great chunk being the school district. Has the school district heard of this? Has the school district? Has the school district looked into this? And is the school district having any thoughts about offering this thing for another slice of the pie with that charitable contribution that could possibly assist tax payers with that?
So I think if I, if we're talking about the same thing, this is something that needs IRS approval before it goes into effect.
It does?
Right. So I'm not sure whether that's something we can do. Can we look into it?
Sure.
But I think the answer to this question is no. Have we, have we, I know about it.
Would it be our place?
I don't know. That would be, that would be.
Though we are a large section route, do you assess me?
Because there's no chance. Right. If we don't assess, the tax bill goes to the town council that us and then it just shouldn't be a tax. So my first instinct is that it wouldn't be something that we could do. Can we take a look at it? I won't give a personal look, but I don't think we could, but we could certainly take a look at it.
Mr. Polidoro, can you, I'm so confused with what Mr. Polidoro said. Can you say that again?
Sure. So when your tax bill goes to Gloucester Township, correct?
Yes.
They're the taxing entity, they're the.
Not what you said, what Mr. Polidoro said about the first reading. If, if a resident makes a contribution to the township.
In the name of.
It's something where if it's like a charitable, a certain amount is a charitable contribution, it may, pending IRS approval, which I think we have, Mr. MacCann, would you help us out here? But in terms of if it's a charitable contribution, maybe we should write it off. That's the thought behind it.
So would you write the check to Gloucester Township or would you write the check to Gloucester Township Police Department?
The taxing entity. So that's the problem. That's my understanding.
So at the next regular meeting, can I expect whatever your findings are into looking into this? As we will follow up with the township as well. And hopefully they won't be on the same menu.
Okay. Right. I don't think we do, but we said.
It's almost.
All right.
And again, happy Thanksgiving.
In the past years, I've come here before and I've asked them about videoing meetings. I understood that you didn't want to apply strictly because we're going to different schools and have different locations. So I'm going to ask again, maybe you all can consider or discuss it or whatever, videoing your meetings and just making them available on the school's website. I'm asking this because as I went around these last three months and had a lot of residents and a lot of parents in the course of campaigning, they all asked, where can we see them be? We both work, we have dinner, we have kids, our kids belong to schools. It's impossible to get them, but they'd like to know what goes on. And my thinking is that rather than reading comments on social media, rather than hearing in the bus stop somebody's opinion as to what happened at the where that we, if we could video it, and we made it available at their leisure, they could actually see them. They could see what you do, they could see the rest of our students, they could, they could take away everything that I take away sitting here and have their own opinion as to what they like or what they don't like, or what's good, or instead of just hearing from someone else. So I'd like to ask you to, you know, get together and discuss that and see if that's an option to put the recording in.
I know the minutes are online.
Online. It just, just whether if you look, there's a lot of school districts in New Jersey and South Jersey, which is video for me and, you know, it's not, it's not it. We just video the pages and to be able to run their website.
I know that we did it last year, we priced it out. And it was, it was a high cost because we, because of school to school.
Well, they, they go to the people who come to our meetings and they write it out.
Those things that go into it, I'm sure. It's something that, that we've already addressed last year.
Well, I didn't mention, I guess that we should, we should have brought it, when we got back to you. So that's why I'm asking again. I mean, this is asking, I mean, it seems like it's a, that it's certainly a plus for parents. So many questions don't understand what those are doing. They think you're responsible for what you're not responsible for. I just think it gives, you know, clarity to everyone.
No, I agree with you. We can have a look into it again.
Someone has a written, so that's why I'm asking you to do that again. And to go to what this is, this is the question is, we have a discussion for any, including towards vetting issues that have to be presented and have been on social media and everywhere. They're kind of, so many to everyone. I mean, I myself personally, forget that I have a grand, forget that I have a company, I myself as a grandparent of children in schools and have had to watch many, many elections for school board, and many others, long before I go attend any of them here. Now that piece that they put out, the website was connected to a food shop affiliate business. There's no need to do anything else. I mean, they're not the residents running through the school board, they put their own address, they put their own names, there's nothing to hide. So that, that concerns me, that, that came back to, to what it's called, what it's called? Whatever it's called, but it was a food shop. And if I'm candidate running, I feel that I am responsible or accountable at least, but anything that bears on me. So I don't see what to do, but I'm finding that we are in that situation.
So that is a technical. Right. So first of all, technically, the fact that you're a candidate, I don't think that has any bearing on anything. I think as a citizen, you have the right to question anything. We appreciate you coming, we appreciate you speaking. And so don't think that anybody I think up here even thinks that first, I think that they're coming from any type of biased point of view. But as a Board of Education, there is only one situation where a board can act to remove one of its own members.
Why do you choose?
Oh, no, I know what you're saying is, I'm just saying what a board can and can't do. Whether, what the board members think of anything is certainly something for them to consider, but as a board as a whole, the only time that we can remove somebody from the Board of Education is if they disrestate meetings without good cause shown before this meeting. And that's still a discretionary act on the Board of Education. So, but beyond that, I mean, it's, it would be something that I think that in terms of, I'm not really sure where you're, where you're getting at in terms of what the board members do.
We don't endorse or hold up any of the candidates. So then nobody comes to us, yes, for approval.
Right. As a board. Well, no, as a board, as a board. Yeah, I think we stay out of elections.
Yes, yes.
But as a resident, I would hope that the Board of Education knows something about the people that are running on the country.
We have, if somebody, if somebody gets their petition and is elected and passes the background check and takes the oath, we have to let them on.
So they haven't connected to a food shop, that's like.
No, no, I know, first of all, first of all, that's, respectfully, that's not what I said.
In my eyes, there's a huge difference between education and a food shop. Now, that it could come back to a hardware store, I mean, we had this conversation with you. But that's okay.
But that's, but that's not all that I said. Completely to another context.
I'm sorry, but those two things don't go in a twine apart to the bridge. I'd like to know why the public was not presented with the candidates, so that we could find out who they were before we move it. Why aren't there no forums for us to meet the candidates? We're asked to make a decision, we're asked to find out about these people. There's no way for us to.
Can I ask you about the board, Mrs. Brown? Why are the board getting stalled or something?
Well, the people are running for election to your board. Who would be responsible for letting the public know who these people are? Whose responsibility is that?
Well, historically, for this Board of Education, it is those individuals that are running for the board. The onus of getting their name out, they do it, I guess, in different formats, lawn signs, ads, things they mail out, perhaps they call people. But if you're talking about something like a meet the candidate, that hasn't.
Did anyone ever request that for this past election?
There was a request, yes.
Was it a breach?
No.
Why?
Well, yeah, it, it was somewhat complicated. It was not something that was endorsed by the entity that I was originally told by someone. And for that reason, they weren't granted access.
Could, this is getting pretty embarrassing for the taxpayers of Gloucester Township, when they can't vote for somebody with the full knowledge of what's going on. Can I ask that your board be responsible for holding the meet the candidates meeting for any future elections? So that the public, even if it's only three of us that show up, might come and learn about who the people are that want to be in charge of our children's education.
So I think there's a difference between, I think that's, well, in terms of, could we? Possibly, yes. But we can't make anybody come to meet the candidates, right?
We can't even make the candidates up.
No, I'm not.
No, no, the candidates as a whole, that's what I'm talking about. So it's something that, could you, yes, the superintendent's doing pretty consistently I think as long as I've gone.
I'm asking you to make available to any candidate who wants to attend a meet the candidates meeting. If nobody shows up, if no candidates show up, it's on them. But I want our taxpaying public to be fully aware and knowledgeable about the people who want to be in control of my children's education. And I think, where am I letting out? I mean, there's, you are the place that I would go to ask to present that, so that we can know who is going to be put on the board. I mean, at the next election, if people will want to have meet the candidates, is there going to be another reason why we can't meet them?
It's really a hard decision.
No, actually, we were, in the past, because.
Again, none of them do sixteen years' time. So it would be new ground. And I think the only time it happened in some kind of very small setting, it was somewhat built and seen and delivered and did turn out to be plausible, a little bit small.
But you guys.
No, no, no. We just have a person that is cars.
Well, I mean, I'm not necessarily trying to make it political, I'm trying to make it informative.
Actually.
You know? So you can put limitations on things as to, I don't know, but however you want to limit it.
Superintendent has been opposed to using the building's board to candidate second class, is that fair?
That's true.
Okay. If the board is that something the board would want to do next year, that would be the board's prerogative. So if you take that as a matter of.
All right, we'll take that advice.
Would, would it be possible if the, I don't know why the superintendent wouldn't want the candidates to be presented here, but could the candidates be presented at a council, at the municipal building?
That's probably a council meeting.
Because we're.
No, no, but not necessarily a council meeting, but at the municipal building, at a Gloucester Township owned building, could we have a meet the candidates?
If whoever controls that building allows it, then of course. But I'm, I'm not sure what you're asking, could we? Yes. You said could, the answer is yes. It's a policy decision that the board or the township or whoever owns the building would have to make.
Okay. So any lack of presentation of candidates? It just seems like people want to hide something. And I don't want things to be transparent, that's all. I just want it transparent, so, so taxpayers can know who they're voting for. But we'll have to see for the next election.
Thank you. Okay, we have time for one last comment.
She's later. I'm confused as to why, I guess you were confused to have the meeting for you, clarify that for me? I don't understand why you're confused about.
Well, I'm opposed typically when they, when there are different groups try to sponsor these, they are somewhat parochial on who they want to invite.
Okay, but I think the way the question was presented, the, why is you to promote it? So you guys are not political, correct?
But you're asking.
There is no political.
But it's not political. The school board is not.
If you're promoting nonpartisan.
It's nonpartisan. No, it's not, it's not supposed to be political. It's supposed to be people writing for a non-fee school board position.
And it's not.
Job, make sure to say, when we talk about this in the past, your opinion has been, here, any election stuff, partisan, nonpartisan, out of.
So that's the answer, because it's political, you don't want to do what's political.
No. Because when they attempt to do these, including this year, it's been inherently unfair for everyone. And when it's not fair, they don't want any pardon. That's my answer.
But if you guys ran it, you would gain control. And you could make it fair, because you're not.
Everybody could be invited, you could even pose some questions in the past.
Historically, this district has not had that.
Okay, but that's what we tried to say, but again, if you control it and it's supposed to be nonpolitical, you could even have the candidates come and say, my name's going around, I live here, this is my background, blah, blah, blah. And have everybody present to the same forum, just so the citizens are informed of what you look like, where you live, do you have kids, do they go to our schools? What do you do for a living? Are you, did you ever have a job before in your place? Did you go to high school? I mean, those kinds of things, it doesn't have to be political. I don't care if we're a Republican, Democrat, it doesn't bother me, I don't really care. I just want to know are we qualified to sit on a board and the township that I live in? And that's what people want to know.
All right, something I will discuss.
Okay.
I need to extend a further portion.
Second.
Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Polidoro?
It's up to you guys.
Thank you.
You will need a voice.
Some of us louder ones?
No.
Oh.
Sure, yes.
Mrs. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Lynch, yes. Mr. Donald?
Yes.
Ms. Robb?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Just one question from the law. Yes.
Can you adjust a bit?
Mr. Yallow? Mrs. Santi?
Yes.
Mr. Polidoro, disrespect to you, but it has been, well, in the past years that we have a meeting, other school districts do get it. And I would like to ask these boards to maybe go to the other school districts and find out, validate their, and have it presented. All the members can be invited, who aren't invited to certain people too. So I would ask that you would maybe go out to the other school districts and see how the registered districts have done it. And again, I don't disrespect you, and I don't mean disrespect to the board. But it is, it's disheartening when you see what's out there and what's happening. It's disheartening when you have people that want to be on the board and care about the children of Gloucester Township, and then you have people that are just there and don't show up for meetings and whatever. And I'm surprised, five of those three candidates, I would think they'd be here to see what's going on, where they are installed in January. They have no clue, none of these people are in the school building. And that's disheartening, the children of Gloucester Township. So I just ask you to, please, all people.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments?
Any other public comments?
Listening to the questions that have just been made, it's pretty obvious that the school board doesn't want to get involved in the process because it is, um, voting process. And I don't blame you for not wanting to get involved. I think the question might be fine-tuned a little bit more so. That the school board does have control of the venue to which this meet and greet can be held. Again, I don't blame you for not wanting to get involved with meet the candidates. You have been through that process, you have been elected to do just that. But the judgment call on who is representing for the meet and greet should be inconsequential as to who wants to have it. If you're willing to facilitate the venue, any one of these libraries, it shouldn't matter who wants to have it. And if anyone's worth assault and running for any office for a political, non-political position, having it in a library like this, shouldn't matter who's asking, so long as all of the candidates agree, you do it. I think the only choice of what's being asked over here is will you facilitate a venue for a meet and greet? As far as the process itself, I, my opinion is I think you're wise to stay far from it.
So, I mean, I think, I think we're saying the same thing because we're, I think you stated the reason why. In the past, we have, could we, in the past, we have not done so. In the future, could we change for someone, absolutely. Could we have venue where a meet the candidates may get help? Historically, we have not, could we, yes. That would be, I think, the superintendent's been opposed to that in the past as that's come in. If the new board, because there will be three new members of the board, wants to make that facility available, then I think that's something the board can consider. But in the past, I think it's been pretty consistent because we felt that the decision of the board, just because of the superintendent and majorities of the board, that it's been, let's stay out of the processing time.
And, and I think that would be kind of taking what they're asking and, and fine-tuning it just to, will you provide venues in the future for that? And again, whoever may have been asking for whatever representation, it really shouldn't matter as to who is asking, if all the candidates agree or the request well-equal.
Does it really matter what the venue is?
I'm sorry?
Does it really matter what the venue is?
I guess if you're looking at the school board, the library in any one of the schools.
What do you mean Camden County Library in the middle of Blackwood?
It can, that's a probably a little bit more complicated, but when you're talking about running for either regional, rural school, I, I think the library is appropriate.
What raised that?
I'm sorry?
You were saying you had no for it?
Oh, no, I was gonna say, it's just a venue, I think everything else is inconsequential. But it might be a good idea, okay, we provide a school when somebody asks, and that's.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
If I may to obviously name Mr. Wong directly, there's nothing that can be done without newly elected school board members. Can, can the board make a request that they do an honorable thing and step back from the election?
I want to hear something.
Well, or has it, can the board have a, have a discussion with?
If they pass their parental background checks and they wouldn't be seated, there's nothing the board can do about that. In terms of telling, demanding a resignation or something like that.
Well, the, the fact that, I mean, like, and I'm only going on what is the one thing on the internet? What is being coming to, you know, maybe it would be discussed if you would have a discussion with them and say, it's this factual, are you being slandered by this video? What can you, you know, how can we justify this? Or if it is factual, uh, that a newly elected board member said he was living here with his two kids and doesn't. Don't you have to live here on what, or are these requirements, you have to live here? So would it be up to you to request that group?
No.
Who would request that?
So that would be something that, the only person who can remove a school board member is the Department of Education.
Well, I'm not saying who, I'm just saying prove that they live here. Who would have, who would they have to prove that to?
Well, it would be something that's on the petition when you submit it, we have to sort of find a way to be there. We're not an investigating body.
But if they lied on their petition, um.
That would be something the Board of Elections or the Department of Education, it's something that comes up with board ethics. Um, there's, there's a mechanism for that as well.
Has the township citizen approached the Board of Elections with that question?
I don't know how you could do that to the Board of Elections, not the Board of Elections. So I don't know the answer to that. But having a board of elections on the complaint, I do not know the answer to that question.
So we're just out here on our own.
They were legally elected.
Yeah, even though they lied, possibly, possibly.
Can you not ask me if they live here now?
They submitted other petitions that they live here.
To the best of our knowledge, they live here.
I'm sorry?
To the best of our knowledge, Kennedy is.
When you submit a petition, that's a petition right there.
Okay, you asked them, now all this controversy's come up.
Well, it's not our role, they, they have to certify it when they run on, on that election form. But they live here.
Can anybody ask them, yes, I, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the first meeting. But what I'm saying is, we're not an investigating body, they were legally elected, if they passed their background checks, then we will see it though. But in terms of what happens in there.
Are there any other public comments?
Oh, I can have any questions, I may not have this, but as far as the solar panels for the roof, when they're put back on, are we aware like how that affects the warranty? Does it affect the warranty, is it a third year warranty? If they put on the solar panels and they screw something up.
Yeah, I believe we did discuss that at a prior meeting, maybe we weren't at that one. Tranco. They would recertify after they put that on.
And they would be older?
They're the ones that put the roof on.
Correct.
So after the solar panels are on, they become.
Recertified.
Yeah. Okay, so then if anything happens, Tranco is going to be responsible and not the solar.
They would fall under awards, I guess. It would be recertified once the panel is back on.
All right, one more question if I may. The bill that you guys went through approved, is there some public out here that?
No, not one.
It's all on? I can see they were, I can see here, I can see it all on.
We're going to provide your email address and email copy.
Okay, yeah, if you can email that, I can give you my email.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Um, any board member comments?
Just want to say thank, happy Thanksgiving to everyone, to your family, your yield.
Any other board member comments?
Hi, Hessa. Um, I want to, of course, always thank the public for coming out and keeping things lively. And what that does is give the board members ideas of things that we didn't even think of. And I said it before, we don't know what we don't know. So when you guys come out and give your opinions and ask your questions, it enlightens us to some things that maybe we never thought about, so I do appreciate that. Um, I came to many a board meeting before I sat up here, and I videotaped many a board meeting before I sat up here, and I uploaded it to YouTube before I sat up here, and it's very cheap. It costs a camera, the microphone, and if there's a way to get that done, I would be absolutely behind it. And I'll push forward for that. As well as, um, I personally would love to have a meet the candidates night sponsored by the Board of Education in one of these buildings. Um, I think it's extremely important, as Mr. Calacoros said, by anyone who asks it should be considered. Where I disagree with Mr. Calacoros, he said the board should stay away from it, and I disagree. If those people are coming, I would love to meet them beforehand, I also vote, I would love to question them, meet them, and, you know. So, and happy Thanksgiving to everyone, thanks for coming out.
Any other board member comments?
The Americanism Program GT on Friday was top notch as always. Uh, Mr. What was his name, Philip Wayman, I guess, they're from AMES. Um, did say that that is the only Americanism program in the United States, every single school that they've ever seen, that they've seen in a row, so kind of tip this hat to Gloucester Township. So it's, so it's always, always a great event. So, thank you.
Any other? I have two, um, touching on some of the things here, in case some of the public's not aware of what the board's responsibilities are with the candidates. We have to make sure that they cast a background check and fingerprints, that's what our responsibility as a board is to make sure that we have somebody that passes the credentials before they're placed on the board. Secondly, I can only hope that we can come together with the best interest of the kids as priority. Politics needs to be checked in at the door. We all need to work together for the betterment, betterment of the kids, that's why we're all here. I, I kind of take a little bit of offense when some comments are made that either we don't care about the kids or other people don't care about the kids. We're here, we donate a lot of time, as, you know, Lyndon Ellen both know, you spend a lot of time on the board. You don't get paid, but you're here for the right reasons, you want to do the best things for the district, for saving the schools, the kids, the teachers and everything. And, um, I think if more energy was put into that, we could get a lot more done in the district. Great emotions, everyone? On paper? Thanks for coming.